Welcome, everyone. It is just now six o'clock and I'll check with the back room and see once we are good to start. We're good. All right. Welcome, everyone, to the Monday, May 17th, 2021 City Council meeting. Before we begin, we will have a prayer by Councilman Fitzwater, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. To the republic which stands.
Welcome, everyone, to the Monday, May 17th, City Council meeting, also known as City Administrator Steve Kroll's birthday party. So glad to have you all here. Item two, Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Hensley.
Present.
Kimna.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Spencer.
Here.
Spicer.
Present.
Vought.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
Item three, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. We have with us Cole County Health Department Director, Ms. Kristy Campbell, for the pandemic update. Welcome.
Thank you for having me this evening. I am happy to report that I still have good news to share with you. The positive cases reported in Cole County and hospitalizations remain at very low levels. We had nine positive cases reported to us in the last seven days. Hospitalizations remain low. Typically, we're at zero or one inpatient. Our positivity rate currently is at 2%. As the positive cases and hospitalizations have decreased, our vaccination rates are slowly increasing, which is a good thing. The demand is decreasing. I think it's just a sign that the vaccine supply is high and it's available in many places. Right now, our vaccination rate is at 37% of all residents and Missouri just topped 50%. We're at 50.2%. So, very good. Our vaccination site, last week, we did a total of 894 vaccinations. 172 of those were first doses. This week, there's only 153 scheduled. 102 of those are first doses. I imagine a lot of the second doses will just walk in because they don't have to have an appointment for those. And we're still taking walk-ins. The site is offering vaccines Monday through Thursday of this week. Monday through Wednesdays, 9:30, 9 to 3:30, excuse me. And Thursdays, it's 9 to 6. Next week, we are going to move to two days a week because of the decreasing demand. So, Monday will be 9 to 3:30, Thursday, 9 to 6. So, we'll be open on the 24th and the 27th. And then we'll be closed on May 31st to observe Memorial Day. But we will be open 9 to 6 of that, Thursday of that week. So, there's a lot of other opportunities for vaccinations in Cole County at the retail pharmacies and also Jefferson City Medical Group. The Community Health Center Central Missouri is also taking vaccines out with the mobile food pantry and other locations throughout the county. And all the information about these vaccination rates and also the events can be found at covidvaccine mo.gov. So, I'm very pleased that we're moving in a positive direction. Last week, CDC did release new guidance for relaxing restrictions for those that are vaccinated. And we're really happy to see that many jurisdictions are, you know, releasing their restrictions and easing their mandates for residents, for occupancy levels, and for masking requirements. So, I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mrs. Campbell? Councilman Scott?
I just want to echo the appreciation for your all's department and what you've done for Cole County and Jefferson City. Just have a question for you, though. Is there a time where you think will, you see is appropriate to maybe have an after-action report of things? You know, obviously, my brothers within the fire service understand what that lingo is and maybe you don't. But to maybe have a better understanding of some lessons learned and how we could maybe be better prepared the next time, in case something like this?
We've already started working on our after-action report because we, part of our public health emergency preparedness contract mandates that. So, even though we're still in the pandemic, we've already started working on that. So, I don't know if we have a set time where we can be like, okay, you know, vaccinations are at this and in case they're at this, it's time to evaluate because it's probably going to be ongoing for a while. We know that, you know, COVID-19 is endemic. It's not going to end. We're always going to have cases now. But I think very soon, it's like been 14 months. It's probably time to keep evaluating what we're doing. And we've certainly learned a lot. And we know that the federal government and the state government, we've all learned a lot and things are going to change. Right now, we're part of a task force with the Governor's Office that is bagging the whole public health system. And they're going to be making some transformative investments in public health with the new federal money that's going to be coming. So, as part of that, we're doing a lot of assessment of how it went, what it, what the local public health agencies need. I know that they, all these councilmen have probably heard me say before that, you know, Missouri has been almost last or last in the nation for public health funding on a per capita basis for several years. So, I think that is time that some real investments be made in public health. We're fortunate here in Cole County that the county does devote a lot of funding to the health department. And they're very responsive to our needs and they, you know, increased our workforce when we needed it. But I know that a lot of health departments around the state are not that fortunate. Their health boards or their mill tax counties and not everybody has an epidemiologist, which we don't actually, or health educators. And it's time that everybody meet the minimum foundational public health service standards. Sorry, that's probably a longer answer than you really wanted to know.
That's a very good answer. You're well-prepared. And again, I want to thank you for, think our county and community owes you a great thanks for your response. And again, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Spencer. Any other questions? Councilman Fitzwater?
I saw the report last week from New York. Mayor de Blasio was offering french fries for people to come in and get their vaccine. And I know we have a new french fry restaurant opening here in town. I was wondering if we were going to make the same offer or maybe pizza. Seems like the mayor is really excited about that.
I think if I was going to, it would probably be more a healthier option than, maybe apples.
I agree. Thank you.
All right, ideas there.
Yeah, and I do want to thank Jefferson City Parks and Rec Department. We hosted an event at the Riverside Amphitheater on Friday night for our public health staff. We had pizza and a movie night and the new amphitheater is beautiful. So, thank you very much. Thank you for helping us coordinate that. You had a great evening.
Well, thank you. We're glad to hear you're able to utilize that for such an event. What a great venue. And also thanking our public health, all of those. I know that last week was Hospital and Nurse Appreciation Week. And you have a lot of staff that deserves appreciation, especially over the last year. We appreciate them now more than ever. But you've always been very good to come to every council meeting and give us an update during this pandemic. And it means a lot. I know that also we'll have, about every couple of weeks, we do our press briefing. So, I know that is to be scheduled later this week. And you'll have some information about the new age groups that have opened up as well for vaccinations.
Correct. There's been a lot of questions about the 12 to 15-year-old age range. So, we're going to make sure to have a pediatrician on the press briefing as soon as we can work around their schedules and also OBGYN. Because there's still a lot of questions from the younger women of childbearing age. So, we want to make sure we get those questions addressed.
Great. Well, it's good to hear that from our trusted source here locally. And that those press briefings are always recorded and played back on our City of Jefferson Facebook page as well. So, people are able to access that and see the information. Any other questions or comments?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell. Item B, the recognition, we are going to do next week, the recognition for the annual comprehensive financial report and popular annual financial awards. So, we will do that at our next city council meeting. So, that brings us to item C. And it's an honor to introduce the new president and CEO of the Jefferson City Area Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Gary Plummer. So, we wanted to officially welcome you back to Jefferson City and to your new position at the chamber. So, we'd love to have you tell us a little bit about yourself. A lot of us were fortunate to know you already, but we're just really glad to have you back.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor, and members of the council for the invitation to be here tonight. I just wanted to start off by giving you a very quick history lesson about the Jefferson City Area Chamber of Commerce, which was founded in 1893, 128 years ago, as the Jefferson City Commercial Club. And one of the early projects was to raise private dollars to construct a bridge across the Missouri River. And it was a strategic reaction to a lot of activity around the state about moving the state capital to another city in our, in our state because of the river being a barrier for access to Jefferson City. We've been involved in a lot of very important historic projects since then. But I just thought that was a great thing to remind everybody about how this organization got started, how long they've been working on that. It's been exciting for me to be a part of the chamber's history for the last 128 years. I was here from 1988 to 1997 as the president and CEO of the chamber. I'm really excited to come back to what we consider to be our home. We spent the last 24 years in states like California, Illinois, and Kansas. And it's great to be back in Missouri. There's probably more excitement, as the council member indicated, about what the rest of my family is doing in Jefferson City. They're bringing back the Pizza Quick restaurant. They're doing it through a food truck and they've had a tremendous response. And that's a big reason why we're excited to be back in this community. On a personal level, I think I've got a great opportunity with the chamber to try to redirect its mission. In light of the separation of economic development from the chamber, we're taking a very hard look at our strategic plan for the next three years and what we do to meet the needs of our members. Obviously, most of our members are small businesses. And so, our focus, I'm sure, will be on identifying what their needs are and trying to execute, deliver on those needs. Finally, I just want to say that we take very seriously a role that this chamber's had for over 100 years. And that is to be the voice of business in our community. We'll focus that effort, I'm sure, on the local and state level, although we have some partnerships on the national level as well. I think we'll be focused on issues like transportation and business climate in general. And I think that the working relationship that we have with this body, as well as the county commission and our area legislative delegation, will kind of dictate how successful the chamber and the business community will be in trying to be a partner with you on some very important objectives. So, thank you again for the invitation to introduce myself tonight. I'm looking forward to some more intimate conversations with most of you. I think we have those scheduled. And I'm looking forward to find out what your vision is for this community and how the chamber can support that. Thank you again, Mayor.
You're very welcome. And we're glad to have you here in Jefferson City, leading the chamber. We know that your extensive experience is really going to benefit the Jefferson City community. Are there any questions or comments? Well, with that, we'd like to invite you up front. We'll get a group picture with our council members so that we can commemorate this special occasion. Steve Erozino. All right, item five is public hearings. And we will start with 2021 number eight.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning 14.32 acres located in the 3700 block of West Edgewood Drive from COC2 RA-1 and RU to PUD planned unit development, approving a preliminary PUD plan for the property and approving the final subdivision plat of Americare subdivision.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the clerk pretty much said it all there. This, this bill covers three items coming from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The applicant, Americare Senior Living, and the property owners presented it last month. The first item. Press wrong button. Can you just go to the next slide, please? I love technical difficulties. Well, the property is currently, covers four different zoning districts, CO, C2, RA, and the Rural Conservation District. The first action actually would zone it a planned unit development. Initially, why it has so many zones is it was to serve as a transition from more of a low use to a higher commercial use. The property is located halfway between approximately Wildwood and South Country Club or Fairgrounds on the south side of West Edgewood. It's about 14 acres. Let me see if my, there we go. The reason for the rezoning is to do a assisted living center, an independent living on these 14 acres. The assisted living would be up next to the street. It's approximately 25,000 square feet and would have 30 units. It'd also, of course, have dining, recreation, a movie theater, and other amenities there. The second part of the PUD plan is actually 10, sort of 10 cottages down here on the south part, along with the country club, excuse me, a clubhouse right there. Those 10 units would, 10 buildings would be two to three units each, one to two-bedroom units. They would all have complete dining rooms, living rooms, a garage, and other amenities. The clubhouse would be a facility for recreation or group meals or things like that. There's also an outdoor recreation facility there, too. The property owner, excuse me, the applicant also has decided to go ahead and grade for a future Greenway Trail coming along the creek here that ultimately could connect to County Park to the southwest. The total square footage is about 6,700, excuse me, 67,000 square feet with 55 housing units. The exterior, right button, would be a combination of brick and vinyl lap siding and stone veneer, very nice with columns and things like that. The parking, I'm kind of mixing the three items together because there's so much here. The parking on the facility only requires 70 parking spaces, but they have 108 parking spaces. And if I can go back here, it would kind of loop around the property. So, it would be a neighborhood-like setting. The other item is a site plan, excuse me. Oh, there's a rendering of it right there, very nice, keeping a lot of the green space. One nice thing about this is with stormwater, only about 31% of the property is going to have a hard surface and the other remaining is all going to be ground. They also have several different detention basins built in along the south of the property to catch the stormwater. I believe they've engineered it so that about 99% of the water runoff would be caught in these detention basins. And that's planned for a 100-year rain event. The site has all utilities. There will be a power line be relocated. And with that, I think that's about it. The property representative for Americare Senior Living is here, too, if you have any questions or if you'd like him to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Does council have any questions? With that, we will open the public hearing portion on the bill. Is there anyone here that would like to speak or would the applicant like to come forward and speak? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Bob Cook. I'm with Americare Senior Living. We own and operate about 158 facilities over five states. Missouri is the primary state, of course, Kansas. We have a couple in Illinois, Tennessee, we have several, and then also a couple in Mississippi. We've been in Jefferson City for over 25 years. Westbrook Terrace is our current facility. That has assisted living facility, a little smaller than this one. And also on that same, or across the street from that, a memory care facility, our Arbers facility there. Just to let everybody know, as we proceed with the construction on this one, we will not, those facilities will stay open. One will remain in Arbers, the other one. I think it's a little flux right now of whether it will be converted to another memory care facility or, which I know is a huge demand in Jefferson City right now. Or we have another one that we've recently converted. This facility, like you said, has, the new one has amenities like a movie theater and stuff. And the existing facility does not. They're not that large to have that much room. So, we're looking at either converting it to another Arbers or memory care. Or another thing is to convert some of those existing facilities into a lower-cost option for residents to be able to move into rather than what the cost of these facilities will run. Plus, then we're bringing in a new part of Americare or a newer part of Americare is the independent living cottages. Everything we do is single-story. I think we do own a couple of existing two-story buildings, but those are not something Americare looks to do, is not anything multi-story in any case, at least at this time. Nothing wrong with those, but it's just not something this company wants to bring. And so, we're looking to bring the new product to the market in the independent living and then build a newer, more modern facility for the assisted living side of the business. Honestly, I can't add much more to what your staff report says as far as what the design and things will include. I'm working on that right now to get construction documents ready. We're not sure exactly when we plan to start construction yet, simply because, as everybody knows, lumber price markets, the market for lumber, everything like that, has gone crazy in the past four or five months. All I can say, I know the facility will be built. I just can't say exactly when we, when we'll start. I know we're looking to submit construction documents to city staff for review probably sometime in the first part of July. Anyone has any questions?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Any questions from council? We know there's a need for housing in our community and this fits a definite demand and need. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak, either for or against Bill 2021-8? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion and take up the bill. Any council discussion or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vought?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item B is 2021-10.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning .22 acres located at 500 East Capitol Avenue from MU-1 mixed-use to PUD planned unit development and approving a preliminary PUD plan for the property.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk said, this is a two-part bill. So, like the one, we're requesting a rezoning that came through the Planning and Zoning Commission and also a approval of a preliminary planned unit development plan for an event center and retail use. The property, I believe everybody's familiar with, is known as Ivy Terrace. It is up there on the corner of Jackson and East Capitol. The property is on about .22 acres. It is zoned, a mixed-use zone, and it's also in the Capitol Avenue Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District. The property, basically, it's not really a design type of change. The PUD request is for changing its use. Currently, an event center and the retail is not permitted up there. So, up here is the only real aesthetics that are going to change in terms of the property. They're going to put in a walkway from the driveway that's existing. I believe this may be new, new construction or redone, but there is a driveway right there. Brick on into the front here. And there's going to be removable ramps up here to accommodate people that need assistance climbing those stairs and one down here. Other than that, there's really no aesthetic changes. I believe they are bringing the original colors and style back to Ivy Terrace. So, that's a good thing. One issue was parking. And they do meet the parking requirement by on-street parking and also working with an adjacent property owner to lease some of their parking spaces. The property will adhere to the underlying zoning signage requirements. The lighting is basically going to be typical residential lighting, nothing flamboyant or bright. And I believe most of the existing landscaping is going to be staying there. And with that, it did pass Planning and Zoning with the recommendation for approval. And the property owners are here, too.
Great. Is there any questions? All right, at this time, I'll open the public hearing portion and would invite the applicant to come forward if you would like to speak. Well?
I was coming up here alone. My name is Deb Sakalaski. I represent Ivy Terrace LLC and my sister.
Wendy Gladbeck. I own Anna Marie's Bridal.
So, this is, of course, this is addressing just the zoning part. As you know, as, as everyone in the city knows, the amount of work that we're putting into actually restoring the home, that's the biggest part of our work right now. But in order to make it the event center, to allow the number of people into this house, we need your support to proceed that. And also for her bridal shop to move in and the retail space within the actual building, we would need this to be approved also.
Anything to add, Wendy?
No, not really. Sorry, Jerry knows me. No, it's just we're really excited about it. We've been working hard on the house and we're really excited. People are asking, you know, we're moving the store two blocks away. So, it's, you know, not a big deal for us to move the location of the store. And so, it's just everyone wants to know when, when we're going to be there, when it's going to happen. And it's like, well, it's a slow process. So, we'll get there when we get there.
Great. Very exciting. Does council have any questions? Well, we appreciate them following your progress. I know you put it out there quite a bit on social media, on Facebook and Instagram. And it's exciting to see the progress. I know you're all working very hard on it. So, I appreciate the work and effort you're putting into Ivy Terrace and bringing it back to life. Thank you all. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on Bill 2021-10, either for or against? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing portion and take up the bill. Is there any council deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vought?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. Well, keep us posted on your progress there. Exciting. Item six, appointments by the mayor. I would welcome Mrs. Gail Strope to go over the following list.
Thank you, Mayor. We just have five recommended appointments this evening to the Parks and Recreation.
the Parks and Recreation Commission, Chris Lichel, and to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Doug Record, Shannon Hawk, Spencer Hoegfeld, and Julia Gamper.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants invited guests. We have none this evening. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. I'll start with our four standing committee meetings. Our full calendar is at JeffersonCityMo.gov. Are there any committee chairs that have any reports this evening? Councilman Hensley?
I'll just mention that the Finance Committee meets in person this Thursday, the twentieth, at seven-thirty a.m. in this room.
Thank you, Councilman Hensley. Any other committee announcements? Okay, I will run through my announcement list. Yesterday was the Community Bike, I'm sorry, Saturday was the Community Bike Ride that is held monthly here in Jefferson City at different areas to ride. I was not able to attend that one, although our city clerk, Emily Donaldson, was on the ride and really thoroughly enjoyed it. So that is a great partnership with Parks and Rec every month. Also, since we last met, I presented a proclamation for Elks USA Youth Week on May sixth. And then I also presented the Family Self-Sufficiency Program Day proclamation on May eleventh. Also, over the weekend, we had the Historic City of Jefferson. They held an event because May is Historic Preservation Month. So we presented the landmark awards that you all approved at the last city council meeting. We were able to present those to the property owners. Councilwoman Laura Ward was also there in attendance, and that was a very well-attended and exciting event for history in Jefferson City. Also, last week was National Police Week, the week of May ninth through fifteenth. And so we want to definitely show our appreciation for Jefferson City Police Department and all that they do, especially thanking them during National Police Week. Also, coming up, as we know, we're approaching the two-year anniversary of the Jefferson City tornado. So there is going to be an event. It's called the Road to Recovery Two Years Later. And it's mostly a press event. We realize that we may not be having a whole lot of in-person events, but we did want to commemorate it. So that is going to be this Friday, May twenty-first, at nine-thirty a.m. The location is-
Four fifteen.
Thank you. Four fifteen Ashley Street. Wonderful. So people are welcome to attend if you'd like to. We're basically going to have representatives from some of the different groups that assisted during that time. It will be recorded, so people will be able to watch the event if they're unable to attend. It will be recorded and shown on Facebook Live. I know Anne Vax from United Way and Chip Webb from Ameren have been pretty instrumental in working on that. So that is coming up. So we are definitely two years stronger. Hard to believe what we've been through in the last two years. We never would have expected it, would we? But here we are. So those are my announcements, and I'd like to turn over to Councilman Kimna, who's going to tell us some announcements about the trails.
A few years ago, there was a group that got together and they called themselves the Jefferson City Trail Users. And this year, they've partnered with the parks to come up with the Trails Less Travel Challenge for twenty-twenty-one. And so if you want to register, it's free. You would complete the challenge anytime between May first and July thirty-first. So you still have time to complete this, and it's basically what they're asking is if you want to walk, run, or bike twenty-one miles within that timeframe. As you do it, you'll become eligible for some cool swag, like t-shirts and other goodies from other businesses from around town. And I think it's just a group that's just trying to bring to light a lot of the trails around Jefferson City. That's the Katy Trail, the Greenway, the Frog Hollow Nature Trail. You also have Binder Lake, Riverfront Park, and Runge Nature Center. I think that covers it. So if you do sign up, we encourage you to place your pictures on Facebook. I think they have a Facebook group. There's ninety-nine members. So you can be the one-hundredth one if you sign up tonight. But we encourage you to tag Trails Less Travel Adventures, tag J.C. Parks, and you can also track your miles with the Link app. So if you guys sign up, hopefully I'll see you out in the trails.
What was that app at the end that you said?
It's the Link My Wellness app.
Okay.
So it's just, yeah, it's the Link's app that you can track-
From the link?
From the Link.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, is that a challenge, Councilman Kimna?
That is a challenge. Twenty-one miles. You got July thirty-first.
Challenge accepted. Who else is with me on the council here?
And Councilman Lester is also part of the group, so.
All right. I think Aaron's ready to adjourn. I can tell. All right. Thank you all for your work on that. That sounds like fun. Any other council announcements? Councilman Schreiber?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a little public service reminder that the Jefferson City Host Lions Club, which was founded in nineteen-twenty-five, we're having our annual peanut sale. It'll be the twenty-first as well. And we will be bagging up the peanuts on Wednesday. And thanks to Mr. Spaulding and the Jefferson City Parks, we'll be using the McClung Park Pavilion as we have for several years. So if you want to help us bag them up, that's fine. We do pick up all the shells and we'll be selling them around town. So you'll be seeing people at a number of locations as we do every year. So that's this Friday, twenty-first. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Item nine, Lincoln University update. Our student representative, Stacy Landis, is not here tonight, but they just held their graduation over the weekend. So congratulations to all the Lincoln graduates. Item ten, presentations from the gallery on specific bills. We don't have anyone signed up, but is there anyone here to speak or anyone on the line? Okay. With that, we will go to item eleven, Consent Agenda. Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I just wanted to pull off item C.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve item A and B?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And now we will take up item C. Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I just seen this on the agenda. I was approached by a couple members of the county commission. I had not looked through the agenda. So my question mainly just process and how this got here. I don't remember it going through any committees, any review, and maybe I'm in error. But I was just curious how the sale of some of our property got here without at least having some vetting or discussion. And my concern was that it could have slipped through. I know everybody looks at their agenda and goes through the materials. It just kind of caught me off guard that a sale of property was on the consent versus a resolution or some other format where it at least forced us to discuss it. And I guess even more so that it didn't go through some kind of review before it got here. So I guess I'm just looking for clarification on process. And I think the other question is how something gets classified as surplus. I know we've got discussions going on in the community about parking and needs for parking. And I know this is a very specific location and a great need by the county. I'm not opposed to that piece of it. Just trying to find out how it got to us via this format.
Sure. Well, why don't I have Mr. Marash give us the background information on that? And then if there's any other suggestions on something else you would like to see done, we'll certainly turn it back over for discussion. So Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Yes. This probably was just a skim time ago, but, you know, more thoroughly at a committee level or something of that nature. I think Mr. Kroll told me that there was some discussion about it about a year ago, but I don't recall that either. But basically, when putting together our budget and public works for parking, we were looking at our assets this year and some of our maintenance issues coming up. And this popped up and we, you know, we're doing some other appraisals, obviously looking at some other properties. We said, well, we probably ought to at least look at the rates on that, if not try to sell it to the county, just to kind of clean that up, that process up. I think the lease was set on it some time ago. They pay eight-hundred-and-ten dollars a month is what I think the fee is, which is not really, you know, the going rate for those spaces. At the time, I think the council gave them a break, a twenty percent break or something like that on the leases. And that was going back many years. But anyway, we knew there were some maintenance items probably coming up on it. And so we asked, I sent a note to Sam Commissioner, Presiding Commissioner Sam Bushman, asked him if they were interested. He was. And so we had our appraisal, appraised at a hundred thousand dollars. So after that, turned it over to kind of Ryan, I guess, and talking to her attorney about it since. So I guess this is the vehicle you would go about to transfer the property eventually. I think, is there one more step, Ryan? I'm not fully sure. I think-
Yeah. So city code specifically twenty-six-A fifty-six specifies that declarations of surplus real estate are done on the consent agenda. This won't be the last time the city council sees it. There will be a resolution that approves an actual agreement with the county. So essentially, tonight's action is to declare it surplus, which is essentially authorization to move it forward in the process. And then the other thing that this consent agenda item does, it essentially approves the method of disposal, and that is a direct sale to the county. So you're right, you would see a resolution for this type of transaction, and that is still forthcoming. This initial surplusing step needs to go first.
Mr. Kroll, did you have something to add?
I was just going to say, so yes, we can come back to committee. We probably should have done that earlier in the process. We've been talking about this for a while, at least at the county level, and thinking that they were the, really the next, really the logical group to be able to use that, even though it is adjacent to a church as well. We certainly can come back to committee, absolutely.
I appreciate that. I know they're excited about it. And I'm not opposed to the partnership that we have with the county. It just struck me as odd, this process. So just questioning that.
Councilman Hensley?
Thanks. I just want to make sure I understand what Ryan said. So anytime the city sells property, it has to go surplus property?
Yeah, it needs to be declared as surplus.
Okay. Yeah, because, I mean, this item in our consent agenda is a single page of maybe a hundred-and-fifty words, the vast majority of which is the legal description of the property. And it says to declare this surplus and to approve the disposition of the property by sale for a hundred thousand dollars. So, I mean, just reading this, it seemed like we were doing both of those things, including approving the sale finally by this. And I don't know, I can only speak for myself. That's what kind of stood out to me about this without a whole lot of other context. So, I mean, I can only remember a handful of other times in the last few years that we've, maybe less than a handful, that we've sold property. And usually, it's an oddly shaped parcel behind someone's backyard, and they just want to expand their yard a little bit or something. This is a much, a much different item. It's, I mean, currently, it's a revenue generating item for us. We're selling it for about what we make, holding it for another twelve years or so, twelve years. So that's a little concerning too, as, you know, as Councilman Fitzwater mentioned, our current discussions about parking. But yeah, I appreciate the additional information tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Hensley. So we currently have item C on the consent agenda pulled out by itself. So is there any further questions or discussion? And it will come back to us from what Councilor Mollman has said.
Yeah, tonight's action is not sufficient to approve a purchase and sale agreement. So this is a, essentially, it's an intermediary step despite the wording of the consent agenda item is probably a little enthusiastic. But as far as a, as far as a technical step, this does not approve the actual sale. That will come back to the city council.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay. And then it can go to a committee in the time?
Absolutely.
Okay. So with that direction, we have item C. Is there a motion to approve? Okay. All right. So no motion. So do you have direction? What to do?
Yep.
Okay. Item twelve, no bills introduced. Item thirteen, bills pending twenty-two-one-four.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending chapter nineteen motor vehicles and traffic by addition of yield signs on Cedar Way.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this would add a yield sign on Cedar Way. It's basically a way that serves employment security, more or less as a driveway.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes. Twenty-two-one-five.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending chapter nineteen motor vehicles and traffic by addition of a stop sign on Tanman Court.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. This would modify our traffic schedule, include this stop sign. Is this on here? On Tanman Court, which is a new subdivision in the city. This would match what's existing in the field today.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Bill passes. Twenty-two-six.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending chapter nineteen motor vehicles and traffic scheduled Jade, parking prohibited by the modification of East Miller Street, seven-hundred block.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Again, another traffic-related item, but basically would switch parking on to the opposite side of the street that now exists. Some users, our owners in the area had asked the city staff about this, and this went through traffic and transportation as well, and recommended approval.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Schreiber? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Bill passes. Twenty-two-one-seven.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing a sanitary sewer and drainage easement on the property addressed as two-eighty-two Madelins Park Circle in the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Ms. Marash?
Thank you. Clerk indicated this would vacate a small portion of sanitary sewer easement, but basically a garage was, has encroached on the easement. Ida Work caught this up. And so we evaluated whether we could still maintain the sewer without this piece of easement, and we can determine that we could. So we would go to vacating this small piece.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Bill passes. Twenty-two-one-nine.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, implementing a traffic schedule for restricted access streets and release certain access deed restrictions for a portion of West Edgewood Drive.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. This bill would establish a new schedule in the traffic regulations, which would establish restricted used roadways. This is related to the AmeriCare items that Mr. Sanders addressed previously. But essentially, this bill would take restricted road covenants that are currently within the land records and put them into the city code. When they're in city code, they're going to be a lot more visible to the developer, development community, and to city staff, helping us keep track of those, make sure that those are getting appropriately forced. And in situations like this, where it is appropriate to modify those restrictions more easily modified, the bill also releases the restricted access roadway covenants that are currently encumbering the tract that is, that Edgewood sits on, that AmeriCare facility will use for access to Edgewood. So this really does two things. Releases the covenants which restrict access to Edgewood and establishes that new traffic schedule. And we see this as a part of a larger, ongoing project to kind of do that throughout the community. Staff is aware of this type of situation in several other places. And we're going to do some more research, make sure we're finding all these so we're a lot more transparent for the development community.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Spicer?
Spicer.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber. Spencer.
Aye.
Bill passes, 2021-11.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a construction contract with Parking Lot Maintenance LLC and a grant agreement between the city of Jefferson, the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the purpose of constructing the Apron Maintenance Project for the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. I think the clerk, the title had a good description of the project, but basically it's a grant funded project through MoDOT. Grant portion covers about 91.5% of the project. The remainder from the city would come from the half cent capital improvement sales tax for airport. Can you answer any questions?
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Vote.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Bill passes, 2021-3 is on the informal calendar, and I will ask the sponsor his wishes, but we are having our work session a week from tonight, Monday, May 24th, at 5:30 PM in this room to discuss the parking garage potential. So I will turn it over to Councilman Fitzwater.
Yeah, with the meeting next Monday, we're just going to leave it on the informal for tonight.
Thank you, Councilman. Item 15, Resolutions, 2021-2.
A resolution creating the Stakeholders Committee for Historic Preservation Code Review.
Mr. Sanders.
Ms. Sinzie will be presenting this to the council.
Thank you. Mrs. Sinzie.
Thank you. The Historic Preservation Commission and city staff, we formally adopted in 2019 the Historic Preservation Plan. Within that plan, it outlined several opportunities to update and amend components of our city code to make it fall in line a little bit more with the Secretary of Interior Standards for the rehabilitation of historic properties, also make the processes a little bit more clear for citizens and city staff. City staff took a crack at kind of approaching those amendments and decided that it was going to be a large project. So we did take it to the Historic Preservation Commission, and they recommended a reviewing body to be, in the form of a special committee, to be established in order to review the code revision process as it's occurring. And the goal of the Stakeholders Committee would, at the end of the day, have a clear, more concise code for proponents of historic preservation to operate under. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sinzie. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Resolution passes, Resolution 2021-3.
A resolution approving the intended allocation of revenues for capital improvement sales tax H.
Mr. Kroll.
Thank you. As was previously discussed in several meetings, most recently at a work session on February 22nd, this item will approve the project list and allocation of revenues for sales tax H, which is our upcoming sales tax, as noted on the screen. During the work session, there was some discussion about adding some money for demolition. Certainly, that decision could be made at a later date and maybe reallocate some of the contingency money. But as I recall from that work session, this is the ramifications of that, the result of that, as well as the discussions that staff had with the county on the joint projects, and staffers here to be able to answer any specific questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kroll. Is there any? Councilman Hensley.
Thank you. Are there specific items that have been flagged at this point for the contingency economic development line?
I'm not aware of any specifics. I don't know if staff's got anything to add to that.
There was an item that we dealt with several meetings ago. And now I'm even forgetting if it was 2021 or 2028. But where, and it might have just been on the budget item. I can't recall. It might have been last year's budget process, actually, where we were talking about how to use certain funds. And I think this particular line in one of the budgets was seen as a possible source. And when I mentioned it, I was told that it had already been flagged and allocated for something else, sort of informally. So I'm just wondering, at this point, if there's been anything flagged in the same way. It sounds like no. All right, thank you very much.
I was trying to think of what that was, too, if it was related to.
Oh, I think it was, it was a few hundred thousand dollars that had been flagged, I think, out of this line to go into MSP.
There was some for economic development, so that could be what that was.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I see a hand over here. Okay. Any other questions or comments? I guess we'll start with Councilman Spencer, and then Councilman Spicer.
I just was curious on the allocation process of how these figures came about.
Yeah, then we talked about that at the study session, which was before you all got on. Essentially, we talked with council about some additional money that would be coming in for the revenue portion as we estimated that. And we took the same amount that was percentage wise in our current sales tax G, and just allocated that the same way, percentage wise, for those other areas, not necessarily departments, but for those other areas. So we don't allocate it by percentage directly, but we just took that additional money and allocated it based on the same percentage method that was discussed and used in, for sales tax G, which is our current sales tax. And as was discussed at that study session, but there is not any magic or anything specific about how to allocate that, certainly by percentage method, just these dollar amounts that are up here.
Councilman Spicer.
Curious why buyers totals bigger, bigger than the police, why their amounts bigger than the police department.
Okay, I might ask.
Somebody be able to explain that to me?
Chief Turner, would you?
No, I don't think they can do it. I think it's probably mine. That is really, as said, in sales tax G, for whatever reason that was, that number was there. And so we just took the extra money that we anticipate coming in for sales tax H, just allocated it the same way as council did in sales tax G. We had our meeting, work session on February 22nd, and there weren't any changes to that. So that's the reason. There's not a specific project that goes with that, or even a specific reason, other than just taking those numbers and bringing them forward as it was done in the past. So it certainly can be changed accordingly to what council may want to do.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Based on future discussions, that those could be altered? Or is that an exercise that could be done tonight?
I think if council wants to change the allocations as listed here, which is what's attached to the resolution, that that conversation ought to be held tonight. We ought to know those dollar amounts. Although the portion at the bottom, which is the joint city council, those are specific projects. We did talk about some specific projects at the work session.
So how's that, how's that performed? Is it like you all do the financial budget process of when, you know, a council wins a suggestion, and then they have to remove the same amount from other areas?
If you're asking if you wanted to change some of these numbers, then the answer would be yes. This is, there's a $28 million total allocation, and so the numbers below that is how, was discussed at the studies, at the work session, those numbers came out. If you want to change that, it still needs to equal up to the 28. So you could certainly reallocate from one department and allocate towards another, yes.
I would like to pose a suggestion on that, then. Pulling 1 million from parks and placing another million into public works, mainly specific to identify the Ohio Street Bridge project, and then 500,000 more to the overlay program.
So would that be a motion to amend the resolution? So there's a motion. Is there a second? I don't hear a second. Okay, there's a second. So we have a motion and second. Any further discussion on the amendment? Did you, would you want to repeat? Did you get the amendment? Or why don't you repeat? Do you have it? Okay, why don't we have you repeat the amendment?
To remove 1 million from parks and place it into public works, specifically identifying project of the Ohio Street Bridge pair replacement, and $500,000 into overlay program.
So we have the amendment. So at this time, we will have a, is there any further discussion on the amendment? Councilwoman Ward.
How would lowering the parks funding this amount affect their bonding? Any effect there?
Well, Mr. Spalding may want to respond. I would think that since the 28 million is an, represents additional money, that what would be listed for all of the departments is more money than they have in the current sales tax G, our current sales tax. And I would think that that bonding is based on the current number. So I would think that wouldn't have any impact. But Mr. Spalding may have something different. See what I'm saying? That sales tax G has an amount in there, and that was what their bond piece had in there.
Margie would have to speak a little bit to this, but we put money in from our current, yes, sales tax to pay for our bonding. So I don't know that this would direct affect on that. Is that accurate, Margie? I don't know.
The bonds are not paid out of capital improvement sales tax. They're paid out of the sales tax for the parks, so out of their operational budget. But if there are any projects that were planned for the capital improvement sales tax, that parks wants to continue, and they want to pay that out of their operational budget, it might affect the amount available for the bonds.
Thank you, Margie. Any further questions? The Councilwoman Ward.
And I also want to confirm that parks' budget, I believe $100,000, is going towards Grant Street already, correct?
Mr. Spalding says yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Mike Lester.
My understanding is that the only funding source parks has or what they count on for any capital project is from these funds. So my question is, what impact would this have on implementation of the parks' master plan if this money's transferred out?
The short answer is it would have a significant impact on master plan process going forward. There's, this money is identified from the master plan that was completed three years ago. There's lots of things we need to do for, to make our parks equitable for all, and that's the reason for that master plan and the reason for the funding and what our commission has chosen to do moving forward.
Any further questions?
Could you just add to that a little bit of what you would foresee in the near future?
We have lots of trail connections to, you know, connect our city. We have two huge needs in identifying the parks that we have at Hickory Adams and at East Miller Park. Now, East Miller is basically, you know, whatever the commission and council decides to do on where that goes, that area, you know, the goal and the vision I have of getting everyone into a park in 10 minute walk, that is a hugely populated area that needs park amenities, basic park amenities. And so whether or not East Miller goes towards a potential veteran cemetery, whether we have to move that park, that is a need that needs to be done, for sure. We have hockey or ice arena needs that we've currently, we're currently working on. We have an inclusive park area, you know, that we're working on. We have currently no parks where all can play together, and we've spent a lot of time and energy in the last year developing this inclusive park system. We also have the botanical garden that's going in that we have partnered with the master gardeners. It could be a tremendous asset for our community, economic driver as well. But those are the top projects that we have going on right now. The next phase that would, that would fund.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. And Mr. Kroll.
I was just going to mention, I think for perspective, and Margie, certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the amount for sales tax G for parks, which is our current sales tax, is about $2.5 million. And the amount allocated, at least proposed, is sales tax H is $2,800,000. So $300,000 is the increase amount. So when you're taking that out, you're getting back into the significant projects, as you mentioned.
Yes.
Councilman Hensley.
Thanks. I have some recollection of staff leadership mentioning at some point in the last couple of months that there might be alternative funding available for the Ohio Street Bridge. Is there an updated confirmation or any other information?
I'm not aware of anything.
From anyone in the room?
Yeah, we were just going to look for opportunities as far as, and see if parks would partner with us directly at Butser Park, but it's grant opportunities, things of this nature. Contingency out of these sales tags. I know it's a council, I think, made it fairly clear that, or at least in some of their parts, that it was a priority to try to complete it. So that was, that was kind of as far as this went so far.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Further discussion on the, Councilman Spencer?
So just, Mr. Spalding, just for clarification, then. So what would be your priorities for sales tax H monies?
Well, I'd have to get my list, but we have trail connectors. Well, I'd have to get my list, but we have trail connectors. We have the inclusive park. We have lots of...
Do you have an idea of cost on the all-inclusive?
The all-inclusive park, just in itself, about a million dollars at least, minimum. Yeah. You know, the botanical garden, I believe, was in the 500,000 to 700,000 range. Yeah. We have, yeah. So those particular ones.
Any further discussion on the amendment? And I, oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Kimna?
And I would like to add, too. I know with the Ohio Street Bridge, we've had some conversations as far as the capital improvement sales tax, as far as that. And that wasn't a major priority for them at that time. So I'm not in favor of moving parks' money to complete that project because of all of the improvements that they have been making over the years. I think they've been a pretty good steward of the funds that we've given them, so.
Questions? Councilman Fitzwater?
I've got two questions. And I understand the discussion, it's a complicated issue. I appreciate the input. I guess I just want to make sure to, that I had clarification that once we kind of approve this allocation, we're basically locked into these percentages. Are there ways for us to maneuver over the next five years? Because I know things change. Or are we pretty well saying, within this category, we are going to spend this percentage of the dollars?
Right. So this resolution is not binding on future councils. And in fact, Missouri law prohibits that type of action. So you can't say in, you know, 2024, you have to continue to spend and allocate according to these percentages. And so what it becomes, it becomes a political question. So essentially, what the city council is doing with this type solution is saying, voters, if you pass this, this is how we plan to allocate this money. And so it becomes a really, a question of accountability to the voters. And if there is a change in those percentages or any allocation or any project that's identified, essentially, when you take it to the voters, if there's a change, you better be sure that you can explain to the voters why you're making the change and that it is justified and, you know, that it's something that is not a, for lack of a better word, a betrayal of the trust that is put in when the tax is implemented. So really, what this is, is this is just saying, voters, if you pass this, this is how we're going to spend it. But it does not lock the city council to that spending plan. It just kind of gives a general plan of what we plan on doing with this money in the future and really a promise, if there's a change to that funding, that it's going to be fully vetted and justified to the voting public. So that way, when we come back for sales tax I, that the voters can trust the city council that, you know, they're spending this money in a prudent and beneficial way to the community. But simple answer, this is not binding for the next five years.
Well, my follow-up question, then, is is it possible to put language in that maybe helps bridge both sides, but would essentially say, we would allocate up to this amount, but we would ask for projects that would justify the expenditure so we'll spend up to if we have projects? And, I mean, you outlined half a dozen. Sounds like maybe there is or isn't. But can you put language in that gives us the ability to, at least in some of the categories, say, here's a pool of funds you have to justify upfront versus us just putting a category there, but saying, you're going to have to justify it before we spend that category versus just making a hard cut? Or do we need to act on the action that we have in front of us?
Yeah, I think it's the city council's prerogative. I mean, this Exhibit A can say whatever the city council wants it to say. In my experience with where there has been uncertainty, you know, I have seen categories, something like, you know, emerging issues or, you know, unanticipated needs or, you know, something like that. We try to accomplish that a little bit, I think, with the contingency line item. But, you know, if there's, if there's a, an allocation, if the city council wanted to say, let's put $1 million toward something that could happen in the next four years that we don't want to, you know, pigeonhole ourselves into now, we just would like a little kind of extra breathing room here or there. I've seen that happen before. You know, it's the great balance of certainty versus flexibility. And it's, you know, really up to the city council to determine, you know, making this proposal to the voters, that it could be trusted with a certain amount of flexibility. So it's just a balancing act that, you know, you guys have the unenviable position of trying to figure out. But yeah, I think you could definitely have language that you describe or an allocation for, you know, kind of unanticipated needs. You've just got to figure out, you know, what the voters will tolerate.
Councilwoman Weisman?
In reality, I think we do that already. We just did that with the Clark Street. Wasn't it the Clark Street intersection? And we decided, instead of putting a roundabout there, that we were going to improve it because I believe that the language in there, we decided was so important that we needed to do something with that intersection, but maybe not do a roundabout because we didn't promise the roundabout. And so I think, I think the Clark Street exit, or not exit, that roundabout is a really good example of how, you know, we do check ourselves and check ourselves along the next five years. So I think, I think the language works as it is. I mean, I think the question just is, are we going to pass this motion or not? And, but I think the language works, and I think that we stick to it. And I think that, you know, we have traditionally obligated ourselves to what this says because that's what we've promised the voters. We've given them a list, and we've said, this is what we're going to do. And we've done a really great job of it in the past. And I have no doubt that future councils are going to do the same. They're going to uphold our word and their word to the voters.
Thank you. Councilman Schreiber?
We've discussed several times the three critical components to a successful community: education, medical care, and parks. And speaking for the parks, they've done an outstanding job of meeting the expectations that have been set forth. We've seen tremendous turnaround in a lot of the things that have occurred within our community because of the parks. So even though there may be a time when we may need to do some adjustment as suggested by Councilman Weisman and some others, I'm for sticking to our original proposal that we have, and I'm against taking any money from the parks this time.
I was just, I was going to say, in response to that, that overall quality of life is certainly important in all the departments and everything that contributes to the overall quality of life. The intent of the resolution, as Councilmember Weisman mentioned, is really to help the committee or that's going to be advocating for the sales tax to give them some direction and kind of let them know some of the allocation priorities of the city council. So as that committee goes out and tries to educate the public on it, that they've got some of that guidance.
Thank you, Mr. Kroll. While I do support the resolution, I do not support the amendment. So if that does become a 5-5 vote, I would be voting no on the proposed amendment. All that being said, though, I do appreciate the discussion. I appreciate you bringing that forward. I think this is good discussion to have. You know, while we had discussion prior, prior to you coming on the council, both of you, I think that it's also important that you all are able to have this discussion, too. And there's a lot of things to discuss, and we're thankful to have your input. And I do appreciate you bringing that up. So while I don't support the amendment that you brought forward, I do appreciate the discussion. Thank you, and for all council members' input. With that, we're going to take a vote on the amendment itself, and then we will take up the resolution. So one more, or we have another comment?
Yeah, could I just ask one more question? The expedience of doing this, do you really need this tonight? Do we have time to try to bring the parties together? Do you want to get this moved forward?
I know we're getting ready to start forming, we're forming the committee and moving this forward. So timing would be ideal to move it forward. Up to council, but I think this would make sense to me that there is time, but it would be nice.
Just for reference sake, in 2016, when this was passed, it looked like it was done first meeting in April. So that is, you know, not saying right, wrong, indifferent for this year, but just for reference sake, this was completed in April back in 2016.
Any further questions? So at this time, we have the amendment. So I'll ask for a roll call on the amendment only.
Weisman?
No.
Fitzwater?
No.
Hensley?
No.
Kimna?
No.
Lester?
No.
Schreiber?
No.
Spencer?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Vote?
No.
Ward?
No.
The amendment fails, so now we will take up the resolution, the original resolution. Any further discussion on that? Councilman Lester?
So I was, what if, under public safety, instead of having it split out between fire and police, it just be listed as public safety for either pot fire or police as needed? Since we don't have, it sounds like it's kind of arbitrary what's, how it's been split right now or based on the last G's.
It is not arbitrary, though.
Oh, I know it's not arbitrary, but based on G and that was six years, seven years ago.
What's the question again?
Just to have it approved for public safety is 5.6 million rather than having fire and safety.
Oh. I think the departments, specifically fire and police, do need a dollar amount because there are so many more projects than certainly what even this would fund. And we talked about those during the study session. So I think it's important to let those departments or those functions, really, fire, police, and certainly public safety, be aware of what their allocation is so they can use that allocation to make the plans for the projects that we talked about in the study session. But the number can certainly change. I mean, if counsel wants to pick another number, certainly done. But I think it's a good idea to be able to show that.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. So this allocation proportion, at least, if not these exact dollar amounts, are the same as the sales tax G for fire and police? Is that what I'm...
Percentage-wise, yes. So the same overall percentage of the sales tax G, our current sales tax. We just use the extra money, the additional money that we anticipate revenue coming in. We just allocated it by the same percentage for discussion purposes, which we had at the study session.
And have we received comments from fire or police indicating a strong desire to change this allocation? I personally haven't.
Yeah, I don't know about other elected officials. I could certainly say that, I can assure you, that all the functions would indicate that there is more, there are more projects than the money allocated here, so.
Say, there are certainly more projects. And I think that there's also a distinction between capital projects and operational type of things, too. So it is a little more in-depth, but you're right.
I was just trying to confirm that we, that there hasn't been a strong push by a department to attempt to adjust this at this point. And that's my understanding, anyway. Anybody? Thank you.
We have our police and fire. Thank you, Councilman Hensley, being from fire end. Okay. Any other discussion on the resolution? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber? Spencer?
No.
Spicer?
No.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item 16, presentations from the gallery on other topics. We don't have anyone signed up, but is there anyone here to speak? Item 17, any counsel and staff discussion of presentation topics? Any new business? Item 18, Councilman Spencer?
Due to the recent oil pipeline incident that we're all aware of, do we have any kind of pre-plan already shelved or in the works of our emergency services and other departments that rely on diesel fuel and regular fuel in case we're interrupted with our area pipelines?
I don't know if Mr. Marash or Mr...
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any major plan, you know, together for something like that from our level. Obviously, we go through our suppliers to get our fuel periodic basis like just everyone else, so it's the best thing.
True that we have fuel tanks, and we've got, you know, periodically monitor the level of that, those tanks.
Oh, yeah. I mean, yeah, we make our orders, we, kind of thing. But as far as security from our supplier, that would be, obviously, that could be a problem in some cases.
I think it would be a major problem for emergency services responding if it's shut down for over a week. I just encourage having some discussions with our local suppliers to possibly have, be ahead of the line, so to speak, if we have some kind of action like that occur.
Thank you, Councilman Spencer. Any other new business? Item 19, approval of the May 3, 2021 closed session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Item 20 is closed session. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statute of Missouri. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the following. Item I, attorney-client communications, Section 6.10.0211. Item II, real estate, Section 610.0212. Is there a motion to go into closed sessions?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.